Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Malibu Planning Commission's regular meeting of October 7, 2024. This meeting is being held in both hybrid format that allows members of the public to participate in person or remotely by Zoom. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request-to-speak form to the clerk before your item is called. Only in-person participants may donate time or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join Zoom meetings printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when your item you wish to comment on is called. Commissioners, when you have a comment, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so we can make our discussion clear and for the record and for the public. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Mazza?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Here.
Vice Chair Smith?
Here.
Chair Leonard?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Who would like to do the pledge of allegiance? Dennis?
I pledge allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lay ball.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with items 4A to a date continued to a date uncertain. Item 5A continued to November 18. Item 5B and 5Z C continued to October 21, 2024.
I will second that. All right.
Commissioner Mazza?
Do we have consensus, guys?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. In regards to, can I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 27, 2024.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to written or all communication from the public. Okay, we're going to do public comments on items that aren't on the agenda. Do we have any speakers? None?
There's two hands on Zoom.
Okay. Who do we have first?
Kevin.
All right. Kevin, go ahead. Are you here?
I am. Can you hear me?
Barely.
Barely. One more time, are you here?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Kevin.
Thank you.
If you could please speak up, please.
Yes, I saw that Hans posted that a lawsuit had been initiated against the city. It names Bruce-
Can you please stop, Kevin?
Somebody's got to fix something because one of those speakers is-
Kevin, if you can hold on a second, we're going to try to get the audio working in the room because we can barely hear you.
Thank you.
Kevin, why don't you-
Let me see.
You still there?
I'm here.
No, no better.
He's up there.
Yeah.
We have a megaphone. I could hold it in front of the speaker. It might be helpful to check if somebody else can call in at proper volume, whether it's his problem or our problem.
We have been experiencing some technical difficulties in council chamber today. They experienced some issues during the city council meeting held earlier today.
Do you guys want to try to go forward?
How would you like to proceed?
If you'd like to proceed and just speak as loudly as possible, thank you.
Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, should I go ahead and start, guys?
Yep, go as loud as you can, please.
I saw that Hans posted that a lawsuit had been initiated against the city. It names Bruce Silverstein and Steve Euring personally, along with a bunch of John Does, unnamed co-conspirators. I think those Does include many Malibu Township Council members like Kirk Cam, Mary Stanley, Pat Healy, and probably people like Joe Drummond, John Mazza. Adrian Fernandez was a good public servant. He wasn't pro-development. He was simply doing his job. And by suing the city and these people personally and getting to go do discovery and depositions of all these bad actors, we're finally going to get a real look at all the abusive behavior. Adrian didn't deserve all the stuff you guys did to him. Kirk Cam screaming at Adrian that he wanted to see the planning department put in their graves. Steve Euring threatening him and Bruce unleashing the dogs. And all this is the least of it. You should be embarrassed, John Mazza, but more than that, you should be very, very worried. You, Steve, Bruce, and the MTC finally went too far, and now you're all going to have to answer for years and years of harassing your neighbors, berating, and belittling staff while colluding to deny so many residents their due process. But Adrian was not the only victim here. Why do you think Richard left? Why do you think you have like 10 open jobs in planning? You, John, and your tactics. Adrian's lawsuit is the canary in the coal mine. The emails, the calls, the threats you make, the rudeness, the slights against minorities. Craig Hill will come tell your story. We all saw how he treats you. So many others have been threatened, intimidated, and humiliated. Look at pretty much all of your fellow commissioners, John. How many of those people have you belittled, abused, taken advantage of, made to feel small? You all need to come forward. You don't need to put up with this anymore. This is just the first shoe to drop. It's gotta be. You have likely destroyed the city you claim to love, but it's more like abusive relationship, isn't it? The city's insurance company has rumored to say they won't cover the individuals doling out this hatred. That means you'll probably be on the hook yourself, and that also means that your minions could cost the city tens of millions of dollars. Do you want to explain to the taxpayers why, John? This is not even mentioning how much your friends in the MTC will spend lawyering up. This is a mess, John, and you, sir, have played a big part in creating it.
Thank you. Who do we have next?
Bradley.
Bradley, are you there? If you could please speak up very loud. We're having problems here tonight.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Go ahead.
Wow. I mean, wow. I was going to speak about Joe Drummond's residency lies, but it looks like she has bigger problems with this lawsuit. I expect explanation from Bruce's allies and employees of all about this here tonight. First was this horrible racist and misogynistic postings. I mean, come on. I saw one that pairs anti-vax misinformation with a famous old video called Two Girls, One Cup, which is a video showing two drunk girls eating feces out of a cup in a sexual manner. Bruce's postings actually encourages people to Google it if you don't know what it is. Can anyone explain to me how this is okay? Craig, can you explain his actions to me? He is your guy. Were you one of the 5,000 members he sent this to? Do you really support this? These were not AI-generated. This is not a hoax, and Malibu is not a place where people can act like Trump and then lie about reality. Bruce posted terrible stuff about women, terrible stuff about Hispanics, the LGBTQ community, sex workers, sex toys, et cetera. It's really awful and revealing. Joe Drummond, are you okay with this? You've seen them. The only people he doesn't belittle and laugh at in these posts are white males. Makes sense, as Bruce was a registered Republican before he moved to California. Then this big lawsuit about abusive staff? I mean, I am confused and concerned here. Were you guys in the MTC really abusive to staff? The staff certainly think so. Did you really support the revealing of private medical information? Did you really sic MTC funders on staff who was just trying to do their jobs? These guys threaten them. No one wants to work here anymore. What I really wanted to talk about was Joe's residency. It is clear that Joe has not been truthful. She was asked to clear things up. She didn't. She tried to lie and intimidate. The facts are the facts, however, and we have turned them over to state and federal tax authorities to investigate. Did you hear that?
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
Bob.
Bob, you there?
Bob, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Hey, can anybody hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
I also want to talk about this lawsuit a bit. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you fine. Go ahead, Bob.
Great. I also want to talk about this lawsuit a bit. This is like a bomb going off in our city. Adrian was a good employee. He worked here for like 15 years, public servant, doing his job, like many of the members of our staff sitting to your right here tonight. Malibu isn't Malibu without the people, and it's clear that they're not being taken care of unless they're funders of the MTC. I've watched like 100 of these meetings at almost everyone. John Mazza belittles a staff or another commissioner or a guest or a lawyer or an applicant. On that note, I hope that everyone watching this who works for the city, who has a story, or those residents who have had to deal with Mazza and the MTC sticking their nose over their fences and being slammed with false complaints, called developers because they want to put in ADU for their grandma. To all these people, come forward and share your stories. This lawsuit and Adrian's courage is opening the door to real change in our city for the better, for once. No one wants to see Malibu overdevelop, nobody, or watch bad projects pass, no one. But everyone wants and deserves to be treated with respect and dignity. This lawsuit will shine a light on that treatment. So come forward, residents, business owners, especially you staff, especially you staff. Come forward. This is the opportunity you have been waiting for to tell your story about the harassment and dysfunction of this commission, members of it, and of the city council, and how this town works. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, we're going to move on to Commissioner comments and staff comments. I'm going to go ahead and start a presentation on the Woosley Fire time extension requests. We'll move on to Commissioner comments after that. All right. Last year, the city council adopted an ordinance to extend the Woosley Fire deadline to maintain non-conforming structures destroyed or damaged in the Woosley Fire. The deadline to submit planning verification to rebuild non-conforming structures is November 8, 2024, and the deadline to obtain a building permit for these structures is November 8, 2026. Homeowners who are not, who will not meet the November 8, 2024 deadline to submit planning verification are encouraged to request an extension by using the forums, online forums. All right. All right. How to submit a time, submit a time extension? Please visit malibu-city.org/rebuild. Click on the Fee Waiver and Deadline section, then click on the Request for Time Extension link to access the online forums. For homeowners requesting a time extension, you will be required to submit the Time Extension Request Form along with a letter of hardship plus a $596 fee. If you were previously qualified for Woosley Fire Fee Waiver program, this fee will be waived. All requests should be emailed to planningadmin@cityofmalibu.org by November 8, 2024. All time extension requests will be considered by the Planning Commission at a future meeting. I have a few stats in regards to the rebuilds. The fire destroyed 456 homes. Eleven of these homes are pending plan review. 362 of these homes have been approved by planning. 92 homeowners have yet to submit to rebuild primary residences. The statistics as of today show 174 homes have been fully completed. 121 homes are currently under construction. 41 homes are in building plan check. 26 homes approved by planning but yet submitted plans for plan check, and 11 homes submitted to planning and are currently or under review. I think there's going to be another presentation in November, right?
I believe we've responded with the information you asked for on the second, on the third and fourth slides today.
Okay.
But we will continue to provide updates as we approach the November 8 deadline.
All right, let's go on to staff and Commissioner comments. Okay. Say, who want to go first? Skylar?
I will start with, by saying that I just want to thank all of our staff for working to get those numbers up and done in what I think is a very efficient manner compared to some other areas that have been ravaged by wildfires. So I know Rebecca, you helped put that together, along with many others, and I just want to thank all of you for doing that. And for those of you that that have not submitted anything, hopefully you can or you can take care of those, the process as soon as possible to get a waiver in or a time extension, should I say. And all of our staff is ready, willing, and able to help you. So if you know somebody that, you know, maybe you know someone that has a piece of property or lost something that hasn't been taken care of, and maybe just as a friend or something, you could help nudge them along with that process. So, thank you.
Who's next?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Skylar. I was called out by name by two of the callers, and I just will say categorically, I don't know what either of them was talking about. I have literally no idea. And I would also just remind people that we are a quasi-judicial body. We're not expressly a political body the way the city council is. So maybe a little bit of what we just heard was within our jurisdiction, but a lot of it wasn't. So if you've got political comments, please save that for the political body. Thanks.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Yes, thank you, staff, for doing that. And please, if you've got the opportunity to go back, go back and ask. They're giving us a free pass or giving folks a free pass for this. And for me, tonight, or this time, 2009, was my first planning commission meeting I went to. So 15 years ago is my first meeting. I've only missed 12 in those 15 years. So it means a lot that I'm sitting up here, and it meant a lot that I sat next to Mr. Haney down there before COVID for 10 and a half years. So it means a lot for me to be here. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Dennis. That's great.
Thank you.
John, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis, for actually coming to all those meetings where you weren't on the commission. More people should do that. First, I want to comment about the comments. The, I didn't get the, all the names, but Kevin fake name and Bob fake name and the other ones fake name also. Didn't quite get anything right. There is no lawsuit, and our city attorney can, assistant city attorney can verify that. There is no lawsuit. Hans pulled his story because he got it wrong. MTC is, was not named in the draft that was received and polled. I wasn't. The other people named in it, other than city council members, were not. Today, I got my ballot in the mail. I assume everybody else did. This is obviously some political ploy. The only person that I can think that would be lining you guys all up every week is the only incumbent running that you haven't named, Paul Gressanti. But I can't accuse him of that because I can't prove it. And you can't prove a word you said because it's all false. So if you really wanted to claim something, use your real names and tell us. And if you want to find out about some supposed lawsuit, ask the city attorney. There is no lawsuit. None. Zero. So it is important that we get facts straight, and we, I don't like to bring politics into any kind of meeting that the city has, but lies are lies. Now, a couple other things I want to bring up. I've noticed, and I've talked to one of our staff members about following through on this, that a lot of houses built on the highway and in the view corridor are turning out to be white. And on every single resolution we have, those, that color is banned. They must be earth colors. If you've ever been to a place like Sedona or Carmel or someplace like that, they have standards and they keep, keep the town looking proper. So I hope we will, we will enforce our resolutions when we make them. Now, one thing I asked, and I'd like to just keep following up on is, I went down to the downtown Malibu on Thursday. Again, I couldn't find a parking place. I went back and looked at one of the restaurants. They had no seats inside, not one seat, and 96 seats in the parking lot with no permits. And that, that is costing the other businesses a lot of money. And so we need to do something about that. Now, another thing that was a little disturbing is, we had a training session last week where we were quote told how we have to act as commissioners and city council members, et cetera. And one of the things said was that we, as commissioners, may not ask a question of staff. We have to go to the city manager. Well, that, and I didn't this week, but it's literally impossible to get a staff report on a Friday night or a Wednesday sometimes, review it, and try to get an answer to a question before we have a meeting on Monday and do a good job of reviewing the staff reports. It's literally impossible if we can't ask staff a question. So I don't know where we're going with all of this, but it, it's going to cause a lot of continuances, and it's going to cause a lot of appeals if we're not able to evaluate what we're reviewing. So I hope there's some sanity brought into this process and, and we're allowed to find out what, what is missing in staff reports. In a lot of staff reports, we don't get dimensions. We don't get, we have things that are missing in resolutions, et cetera. And we try to do our best as planning commissioners to correct that. There's a problem in, in processing all of these, all of these requests for CUPs and permits in a timely manner, and it just delays them if, if we aren't, we don't have information available to us. That's it.
Thank you, John. Kellen?
Yes, I just want to advise commissioners, when public comments are coming in, we should not be having responses back to them. You're allowed to make brief comments. You can say things like, I don't agree with that person said, but one, it's not necessary. These are just public comments to everyone in general. It's not necessary to respond, and you also shouldn't be doing that because it's a brownout concern. Second is that the dais here, when you're on staff time or commissioner time, should not be used for anything political. So even mentioning people who are running by name, pro, con, or somewhere in the neutral zone, should not be happening. So just keep those things in mind, please.
Are there any other staff comments, or?
We don't at this time. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the consent calendar.
Is anything pulled with speakers?
I'd like to pull 3B2.
We have not had any requests from members of the public to pull an item.
Can I have a, make a motion to approve the consent calendar pulling item 3B2?
I'll second that.
Go on, favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let's move on to the presentation on 3B2, which is Administrative Coastal Development Permit Number 23-011. It's an application to demolish an existing single-family residence and construct a new single-family residence and install a new onsite wastewater system and associated development. It's for 6307 Via Cat Aldo Street. All right, we got it. One, we have the applicant, Luke Tar. You want to come on up? Oh, we got, I'm sorry, we needed Renika to give the presentation first. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I did not prepare a presentation. I wasn't aware there were questions or concerns for this item, but it is a request to demolish and reconstruct a single-family residence. Staff did find it consistent with all the applicable residential development standards, and I am available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Luke, you want to come on up? You're going to have 15 minutes to give your presentation. You're welcome to save some time for rebuttal.
Because this is a consent calendar item, you actually have three minutes for presentation?
Oh, sorry.
Good evening, commissioners. Name is Luke Tar. So we didn't proceed with a presentation for you tonight, but just wanted to say we, one of the reasons why it was on the consent calendar is because we designed the building in a way to not ask for anything particular with, or within 18 feet height envelope. All the setbacks are within Laba Heights footprint area, everything we designed to be by right. And we actually, the only reason why it came on the consent is because our interactions with planning, and no, there wasn't any flags that made it seem like there would be an issue. So I don't know if we can talk about it, if there's any particular items that were making it want to be pulled from the consent. Can we talk about any of those items?
We can, we can talk about any of them. We might have some questions for you.
All right, we'll reach out to you if we have some questions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, who would like to go first? Are we going to go ahead and open the hearing?
I've got things. Are you, could you?
I was just going to say, the first thing that was a little, little concerning with this was the landscaping and the photograph on the page. So I didn't know if that- this was the landscaping and the photograph on the page. So I didn't know if that was okay or not, but that was a little alarming. I don't know if that was just for show or whatnot. Anyways.
I didn't even get to the landscaping, so.
It's right here.
What, more specifically, palm trees, right? Yeah. We should do disclosures, though, right?
Yes.
I have no disclosures. Have not met, met the applicant at the site or anything.
I asked Luke a brief question about the elevations on the plan. Learned nothing that wasn't on there, just an explanation of which were elevations and which were sections.
I visited the site, saw that it's surrounded by houses of similar size, sort of small to medium size. Saw the for lease sign, so I looked it up online. It has, the existing house has all updated kitchen appliances, updated washer, all kinds of updates. They're asking $16,000 a month, suggesting it's a viable economic use of the property right now. And yeah, okay, those are my disclosures.
I went by and looked at the house last week and did not discover anything.
Nothing, but this is just a rendering. Landscaping plans would never pass. There's nothing to talk about.
It wouldn't pass.
Okay, yeah.
It wouldn't pass because we don't allow palm trees. It's just a rendering.
Yeah. On the site plan, you show a lot of palm trees and, as I said, you'll be submitting a landscape plan that'll be approved by the city, correct?
Yeah, there's a landscape in the package. Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so. Yeah, go ahead. Okay. So first question, I'd like some clarity. This is for staff. How does this qualify for an ACDP when the 13.13.1 applicability applies to, the only relevant here would be any development of four dwelling units or less, but that does not require demolition? This requires demolition. So I don't know how, what, remind me or clarify for me how we're, we're getting out of straight up CDP to ACDP.
You know, I'm going to look up that section.
I could, I could read it all to you, but if you, well, go ahead. 13.13.1. And while you're doing that, I'll just say, it, it could be relevant because there's a couple of things about this that would benefit from better, more complete public participation. For example, the roof deck in a fairly dense residential neighborhood. I guess I have some other questions, but one thing at a time here.
Please, keep it going so we don't have a dead spot.
Yeah, while I'm looking at the LCP section, we have not received any public correspondence related to the proposed roof deck.
Right.
Usually, but it was noticed twice, actually three times, if you want to count the posting that's on site. And usually, when there are neighbors that are concerned about privacy issues, those kinds of things associated with the roof deck, staff hears from them, and we have not on this application.
Well, so still, the question is, this does require demolition, so how do we get out of that clause?
Yes, I'm almost there.
And then while you're doing that, maybe Director Tumari, you could maybe answer, does it, beyond that question, does it still, would it still qualify for an ACDP when the egress to the site is being changed?
I defer that to the senior planner.
Okay.
I'm, I'm still working on your codes.
On, on which one?
Learning.
Oh, on, on our codes. I thought you were saying me specifically.
So I'm, I'm going to defer that to Renika.
Yeah, so alteration to the access to the site doesn't affect whether it could be treated administratively or not.
Okay, that's good to know.
Why don't you read that section if it's short?
Okay, so the planning manager may process consistent with the procedures in this chapter, any coastal development permit application for the specific uses identified below, except a proposed coastal development permit that is appealable or is within the commission's continuing jurisdiction as defined in Chapter 2 of the LIP. And these are the, these are what can be approved. One, improvements to any existing structure. Two, any single-family dwelling. Three, lot mergers. Or four, this is the one I'm asking about, any development of four dwelling units or less that does not require demolition, and any other developments not in excess of $100,000 other than any division of land. So this requires demolition. Seems like that doesn't get us to an ACDP then.
You're saying it requires CDP?
Yeah, this is a development.
I won't make a motion to deny the project and request a CDP.
I will second that.
It's like kind of black and white.
It seems, but I'm just, I'm asking.
Unless, unless we're hearing otherwise.
Now, let me ask you something. Would, would the motion be to deny or continue for?
Continue for a CDP.
And I will second that if that's your motion.
In which, in which case I could have another couple of points that might help them when they come back.
I just don't see the, the, if it's not being processed properly, like, that's just going to get appealed and cause a problem. It's going to cause a problem for you.
Yeah.
So I need some clarification from Kellen or somebody on this.
Before we, before we, excuse me.
Just, the way that that reads to me is like very straightforward and.
Drew, can I comment?
Go ahead, John. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
I, I think it would help, before we vote, that Craig discusses his other issues, so we, it helps staff process this.
Okay.
Maybe we'll also look at the applicant.
I was just going to say, Renika, do you, did he get that right?
Well, I was just reflecting on other coastal development permits that I processed that did qualify for administrative treatment. It did include the, the demolition of the existing home and the reconstruction of it. I have not applied this particular section related to the construction of less than four residences.
Well, this was called out in the staff report, according to this section, so.
Yes, I understand. I understand.
While, while, while we sort of ponder how we want to.
In a motion, and we're just waiting for your discussion.
Well, we're continuing the discussion. Go ahead.
So two parts to this. One, Craig, I think any other concerns that you have with, with the home would be probably very helpful to the applicant. So if there's any changes that have to be made with that coming forward, that could be done. The second part of that is I would like to, before moving to a vote, get some sort of discussion of this from our city attorney. But he's looking some stuff up.
Yeah. Did you, Greg, I have a question for you. Did you submit these questions to staff prior to this hearing?
I did not. Yeah, I heard this week we're not supposed to contact them, so I was like, all right, I'll try to.
May I, may I clarify that?
Please.
The director may be contacted in addition to the city manager.
So they, they want you to be the switchboard operator?
Yeah.
But they told us at the meeting that the only people that we could contact were the city attorney, the city manager, and the city treasurer.
My, my understanding is different because we publish this with my name on these documents.
I know, but we.
As contacted.
I understand that, but it was direct, I asked for a copy of the deck so I could show that tonight. I never got it.
But I too, we did take questions from Commissioner.
Yeah, I sent, I sent.
I know, but you didn't do what they told us to do.
I understand.
Why don't we just get clarification on that and let you guys know? We don't need to go back and forth.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so then another question, concern. It appeared to me that sections of the structure appear to be taller than 18 feet from the lower grade, the finished grade. John, I just heard you say in your disclosure something about some contact about building height. Did you see the same thing I'm seeing? And I could, I could point to a few of the plan pages if we want to discuss it, or did you notice that?
I was just very briefly shown that it was, I didn't have time to study it much because it was like a two-minute conversation, that it was an interior.
They were cross-sections, and basically, the applicant did show John, but it could probably be a little clearer.
Well, okay, so Renika, page numbers.
Can I have a question on that, on page A2.0?
Not what I was going to say, but go ahead.
No, so, I mean, the, from the, where the 18-foot line, it looks in multiple places that the elevation is higher than that.
Are you looking at the east or the west elevation?
I'm looking at the east elevation.
Can I comment?
Yes, the portion that's above 18 feet is a portion of the structure beyond. So that's not at the, at the face of the structure.
So that's like the next building away, so the elevation of that is different?
Yes, that's correct.
I guess that's hard to understand without.
I was taking that into account and still had a question. I still, still seemed like it was, the way it's drawn, the finished, the 18-foot line, the bottom line of the 18-foot, and I'm looking at pages A3.1, 3.2, or 3.9.
Those are the cross-sections, correct?
Cross-sections, yeah. On a lot of those, it looks like the, the finished grade is shown higher, or the finished grade is shown lower than the natural grade. And yet, and there's more than 18 feet difference between finished and the 18-foot. So I guess what you're saying is, they're, they're using a single 18-foot line for everywhere on the property?
I don't use cross-sections when looking to confirm if a structure complies with the height requirement, because the code is clear that you're looking at the grade where the exterior wall meets the ground.
Right.
Right? And so sometimes there are different grades drawn through cross-sections. It tends to add some confusion because you don't know if it's the grade that's cutting through the structure, or the grade that's at the edge of the building.
Right.
So I always defer to the elevation.
So my thought is if you have the two lines like this, the top and the bottom, and you have a house that has different elevations in different places, I think what we're hearing is we're using only one set of lines and drawing that through the whole house. And that's why it looks like there's a discontinuity in some places. If that's the case on the cross-section, that 18 should move with the house as it moves, right? So it's just, I guess if we're going to talk about bringing this back, this is something we could get clarity on.
I did want to speak to, oh, if I could speak to the question about the demolition. The code does allow any single-family residence to be processed administratively. And my colleague just mentioned too, that, you know, it's been staff's interpretation that that demolition language is related to multifamily dwellings.
That, that is plain English.
Yeah.
A, B, C, and D. That interpretation is not written in the, the interpretation manual, and it has not been a practice of the city to do that.
I think that we're having a bit of confusion with this, and I, I think to give the applicant a fair shake, we should get clarification in regards with examples where in the past staff has given that approval. And bring this back.
Oh, I could give you an address right now, but we can bring it back.
Drew, I think the important thing is, is we have an interpretation manual. Just because you do something in the past does not make it follow the code. And this is an LIP code. This is appealable because of that. And we're trying to speed things along and have a continuous process, so we need to clear this up. The one thing I would like to mention on Craig's talking about the elevations.
John, I want to just finish my comment. I understand what you're saying. It's just that part of the reason why the applicant's not getting a fair shake is because staff, if staff would have received these questions prior to this hearing, because there was confusion in regards to whether we're able to communicate with staff or not, it is not, it's not really, you know, we're making an interpretation, the staff might be able to make a compelling argument to counter that interpretation right here and now.
Well, except that they are not allowed to, because this is a consent item, correct? We're not allowed to discuss this stuff? So, and until the city attorney comes back and clarifies, we were directly told at the, at the meeting by an outside consultant, we can't do that. So until the city attorney comes back.
I, I was told, I, I totally understood it as something different. It's just that, I know I did send it to, my questions to staff a couple days ago, but, and I probably wasn't following the rules, but we've been clarified, you know, we're supposed to, we're allowed to ask questions and it will be circulated.
We have not been clarified. Our city attorney just told us he was going to come back with the answer. Okay?
So I would make a helpful recommendation here that I think it should be continued. I don't want to opine either way without consulting with staff and probably talking with the city attorney to discuss this. I do think everyone's correct. We do need clarification left, right, up, or down on this, and it would be the most fair to the applicant for us to do that prior to making any decisions here. Of course, it's your choice how to make these recommendations, but that's how I think it makes the most sense from my eyes.
Okay, well, I would just like to say that I think it would help us a lot on all applications to have some dimensions on the plans. They're obviously there somewhere, and somebody pushed a button and takes them away, because there aren't any. Okay, so we can't determine these heights and stuff.
As I said, we.
Hold on. You're saying that there's no dimensions?
Try to find, try to find the lot depth for slope analysis, for example.
Got it.
Try to find the height, you know, the, that kind of stuff, we, we miss all the time. We don't get them. The other thing I want to mention, just that Craig mentioned and Skylar mentioned is, we need a better explanation of the landscaping plan, because it appears to approve prohibited plans.
Those are renderings, and it's, the landscaping plan does not have approved.
The landscaping plan does have the palm trees.
I didn't see them on them.
I didn't see them either.
Skylar just showed them to me.
No, that, that was a rendering. What it does show is on a couple of the site plans, it shows some larger footprints of a palm-like tree, which is, doesn't jive with the landscape plan, but I think that that can get cleared up when this comes back.
Yeah, this is all clarification. So is that all the clarification we need? We can vote on this?
No, I have one more.
Okay.
If we can turn our mics off for people not using them, it helps.
If I may. Renika, regarding project alternatives, you wrote that it's not anticipated that in addition to the existing residence would be a substantially environmentally superior alternative. I wonder, did you have any discussion with the applicant about environmental impact? And the options of what to do with the property?
Did I have a conversation with the applicant? No, this, this was analysis that was on file when I inherited the project, but I did not have a conversation with the applicant.
So we don't really know on what basis that it was decided that this tearing down a 2,500-square-foot house and building a 7,000-square-foot would be not of greater environmental impact than just remodeling or something? We, that, that hasn't, it sounds like that hasn't been explored, or you don't know?
I mean, it's an existing, in an existing developed area, the construction of a new house, I don't see that as having adverse environmental impact.
Okay, well, I guess in the end, there's a question here of how far the scope of our jurisdiction reaches here, but if you look at the state law, AB 1279, the greenhouse law that Fran Pavly got through, that calls for carbon neutrality, I don't think the state gets there by prematurely tearing down houses that still work. This is, it's all new, it's been updated, it's been, you know, this is like the equivalent of taking a perfectly fine eight or 10-year-old car and sending it to the junkyard because you want a new one. And, you know, I don't know, it just seems like.
Can I make another recommendation?
Please.
If we're going to continue it, we should continue it, and some of these recommendations can either just be quickly said or by email.
All right, and that, that's the end of that, but I just wanted to say, it would be helpful to have some greater support for why this is not a significantly environmental impact.
Noted, thank you.
Are we going to change the motion, or?
No, the motion was continued for a CDP.
All right, Skylar, go ahead.
I was going to ask our city attorney real quick. You said, there's two motions, right? There was one, or been discussed two different ways. One is to continue it to require a CDP hearing. The other is to continue it to get some clarification on you guys and have it back. My reluctance to do. My reluctance to do the latter is the timetable for these guys, right? That we could be just wasting a bunch of time. So I don't know if there's a way to do it in two-part and say, look, if you go through that process and you decide, hey, you need to have a CDP, just bring it back as a CDP and don't waste the time. Right?
Yes, that was going to be my recommendation.
Okay, so that's, that's what I would like the motion to be, if you're okay with that.
Is it now to bring it back for a CDP?
No, the motion is to basically defer to our city attorney, let him, let them make the recommendation whether or not this under their, the process should have been coming to us undercover as a full CDP or not, because there's some ambiguity with that. If it is, great, it comes back that way. If it's not, it's continued and it comes back to us as it is right now.
Okay, well, let me understand that. What would come back? Would it come back a recommendation to have, would, would first come back what a CDP is, or just come back whatever with a legal opinion attached?
So what Skylar is saying here, Commissioner Peak is saying, is that if when we go back in the next couple of days, weeks, and we talk with the city attorney, city manager, whoever we need to speak to, all of staff, and we determine that this was correctly brought forward as an ACDP, then we would bring it back again as that. However, if we disagree with that and it should have come back as a regular CDP, then we would bring that forward to you.
Okay, so are we continuing to a date uncertain? Okay, that's fine with me.
May I clarify that? May I clarify that in doing that, we'll, we'll get whatever the evidence your decision is based on, why you believe that?
Yes, we'd be happy to explain our, our thought process.
Okay, before we vote, I want to ask everyone here, does anyone have any questions for the applicant before we do this vote?
No.
I have a question. I have the right to ask.
We have to ask you a question.
Let me ask you a question. What is your question?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Skylar. Okay, let me just, we here, and we're working a lot in the city, we understand the, the problem with timeframe and so on. We do want to do everything by law. It's not even a question. It wasn't our determination if it's go this way or other way. But we're working on this project for two years.
That's not a question.
Wait, I didn't finish. I will get to a question. So first of all, what I'm stating before the question that will make sense, that the timeframe that you raised up, correctly so, in a minute, we're putting it on the city attorney, with all this respect to you personally, we can sit for a few months right now on debates. And that, I, I don't see any time limits for it in any way or form, especially that we already worked for more than two years on this project to try to satisfy all the question, not to come in front of you and answer your all the questions.
Okay, so the question that you're having is that you would like to make a suggestion that you get a little more certainty to your timetable?
Yes.
To a date certain?
With some kind of a date.
Okay, so I, I understand the concern related to that and the semi-question. What I'm trying to do is get you to a place that gets you down the correct avenue. Because based on the issue that's raised, I'm not willing to support it, other than it coming back as a CDP unless the city attorney says otherwise. So I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for everybody, but if you got a denial, you'd be back to the drawing table and trying not to give you that. I'm trying to get, trying to get you to a place where you can get this decided in a manner that would support the project and hopefully support it from all five of us.
Any other questions?
So my question for our, our city attorney with that, is it not prudent for us to say we would like this back on a date, you know, a date certain prior to X date? No, just, just leave it as the way it is?
I would leave it as is, and I would just say that this is not something that should take a long time. This is a relatively quick process, and then it will be up to working with staff on when there is time in the schedule to bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll call a question.
Thank you.
Go ahead, John.
I just want to call a question.
Okay.
Rebecca, are you clear on that?
May I, may I just ask for clarification? Is the motion as currently stated to continue the item to a date uncertain and direct staff to determine whether the proposed development requires processing as a full coastal development permit?
And, and bring the project back as such, with whatever that recommendation is from staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes, thank you.
Vice Chair Smith?
Only voting because of the continuance and it gets them back. Otherwise, I think this is awful.
So that was an affirmative vote?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm sorry. All right, next up, we have 5D. It's a coastal development permit, number 21-028, a follow-up application for emergency foundation repair on an existing single-family residence at 26850 Malibu Cove Colony. This is in an appealable zone. Do we have a presentation on this? Okay, disclosures first, okay.
I, I have not seen the project. I do have known the applicant, the, the owner, I guess, for a very long time. I don't have, he's never spoken to me about this, never discussed it with him at all, so, nor have I worked for him, so I'm just leaving it at that.
John?
No.
I did ask staff one question on this before I heard that we weren't supposed to, and I got somewhat helpful reply, but I figured I could follow up here then.
Dennis?
I had an appointment, but I had to cancel because work, work gets in the way of my personal time. But, um, yeah, that was, I was, I was set to do that. And I, and I just love the owner's name on here, which is more than we deserve. I think that's wonderful.
All right, I have no disclosures. All right, shall we go to the presentation?
Yes, hi. Good evening, Chair Leonard and members of the planning commission. This next item is, as mentioned, a proposal for a repair and maintenance to an existing foundation on a beachfront, single-family dwelling located at 26850 Malibu Cove Colony Drive. It is a follow-up to an emergency coastal development permit, number 19022, that was processed in 2020. So as I mentioned, on January 2nd, 2020, the city issued an emergency coastal development permit for the repair of the existing foundation system that was compromised by weather and exposure to saline water. And to fulfill their conditions of approval on that ECDP, the applicant has submitted the follow-up CDP before you tonight. This project is located on the ocean side of Malibu Cove Colony Drive. It's in between Dam Blocker and Escondido Beach. The project is within the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission. The project proposes a replacement of existing concrete grade beams, repair and reinforcement of four concrete piles, new concrete cover around the piles at the surface, replacement of two wood posts at the edge of the beachfront deck with metal columns, and the replacement of a concrete slab area at the edge of the residential building. The area of work consists of foundation elements on the ocean side of the road. The foundation elements, I'm sorry, ocean side of the property, the foundation elements closer to the road were not altered. Here's a before and after photo of the work that was done to satisfy the emergency permit. LIP section 13.5 allows for repair and maintenance activities as long as the, those activities do not result in the replacement of more than 50% of the structure. The applicant provided some exhibits, which I'll show you here. The first exhibit that is within your staff report demonstrates that four of 10 piles were repaired, six of 10 piles were left unaltered. After some questions and clarification, the applicant supplied an additional exhibit that shows that out of the 6,604.29 cubic feet of foundation volume, only 884.2 cubic feet was repaired, constituting 13.39 of the foundation system. So with that, staff recommends approval of the project as proposed, and we're available for any questions.
Open the public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and call the applicant. We have Charles Santos. You have 15 minutes, if you want to save some of that time for rebuttal?
I brought the architect with me, Eden Dunning as well. He's here to answer questions about the project. But, yeah, essentially, the owner repaired the, the ocean side of the foundation. She had a structural engineer study it, and it was corroding and being compromised. So we applied for the ECDP, completed the work, and then followed up with the CDP, and essentially stayed under the 50%, and that, that was the scope of work.
Okay. We didn't run the clock, so.
My apologies, I'm second to the speaker.
Okay.
We do not have any other speakers, so if you did want to provide any additional comment, this is your, like, guaranteed opportunity to do so.
Okay.
Questions, staff?
Okay. Staff, do you have anything you wanted to add? Okay.
Is the hearing closed?
Hearing's closed.
All right. Tyler was, I, maybe I should ask the architect, but was this compromised to the point at which it was in danger?
Yeah, that's according, we only can issue an emergency coastal development permit if, according to the building official, there is an emergency. And in this case, it was compromised to the point that the structure was in danger.
13%, okay. Now, this is kind of a policy question, but we've had emergency CDPs come to us as much as 16 years later. Is there any, is there any, if we said no tonight, what do you do?
They would have to propose an alternative method.
But they've already done it, right?
Yes, but you could still technically deny the application.
Okay, so is there any, any rule of thumb or how these things move through the system? Why, why does it take four years?
Well, a condition of approval on their emergency permit says that they need to submit within 90 days. I believe this in the code as well, but you are right. A lot of times, they don't, and then we have to get code enforcement involved. I think that was actually the case here, not to point these guys out, but there was a situation in which the 90 days had surpassed, and we reached out to them, they were willing to come in and finish the permit. So it took longer than the 90 days, but they satisfied the request.
So do we have to waive the code enforcement action, or is there an action?
There is a code enforcement action. Approving this and finaling the permit will alleviate the code enforcement.
Okay, unless there's any other questions, I, I move to approve the project. Oh.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve item 5D.
Yeah.
Second that.
Well, I did, but okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. Commissioner Mazza had initially made a motion to approve, and so Skylar, I believe you're, you would be seconding that motion?
Sure. Okay.
Go ahead, Craig.
So I asked Tyler a question, he, about the, the 50% calculation of the, what was being replaced on the piles and the foundation? And my question was, and if you could, while we're discussing it, put up attachment four that we had in our packet that I think you had labeled now as exhibit one, maybe? It had a different label on it now. Just so we, people can understand what I'm asking about. And so I asked, well, 50%, you know, is that by volume or mass, or what exactly? And so we're looking at, the, the blue is the existing, and the red is the new, but there's more of that diagram that isn't blue or red. And some of it is new and some of it is existing, so it's hard to really tell what's what. Now, you sent me the chart that we just saw on screen that showed the, and one of the assumptions of that was that the, that the piles were 30 feet deep? And I'm just wondering, what is that, do we know that for fact? And is that just the, the red piles in the ocean side, or all the piles under the house? Or can we characterize that a little more precisely?
Maybe the applicant can speak to it, but I believe in their volume total on the left side, it does constitute all of the piles. And then on the right side is just the amount of piles. So they didn't, they didn't touch all the piles that, all the way down to bedrock, right? They just, they just touched what they needed to repair.
Uh huh, uh huh, okay. Well, that, that, that makes it even more uncertain. But, I mean, just looking at, if it were, you're just looking at the piles, the red ones, the cross-section, the area of it is at least three times the area of the blue ones. If you go, there, you're back on the map. So that would mean, just by volume, that if they were all the same depth, there'd be twice as much new red pile, at least compared to the, in other words, each of these red ones, if it's equivalent to three of the blue ones, then we have six blue versus 12 red. So like two-thirds of this would be new.
But the, the grid tells you, the grid schematic tells you what they worked on. It's right there, tells you what they worked on. They didn't work on everything. They worked on portions, they worked on a cap, they worked on certain things.
So they, you only worked, so I'm just, I'm just trying to get to, to understand it. And you may well be right, Dennis, and, but you, so you're saying that those existing piles are not new all the way down? They just replaced a certain portion at the top?
Right, and in fact, they didn't even replace those piles. They just added some reinforcement elements, is that correct, applicant team? You didn't actually replace the piles on the beach, right? You just re, yeah, please. You just reinforced the existing piles?
Yeah, maybe, is there any chance you could flip back to the photo of the before, and it sort of explains the scope a little bit?
Yeah.
So the, so you see the pile caps there?
Yeah.
We only replaced the outside between six and 12 inches of each of those pile caps. We did not replace anything on the piles themselves. So the piles stayed intact. The most seaward, and actually, I'm sorry, the most seaward, we actually replaced the top three feet of those piles.
Okay, thank you. That, that makes that 13% number make more sense to me, because I was just like, okay, I, I get it now, thank you. That's, that's good.
All right, any other questions? Let's go ahead and call our vote.
Yes.
Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. I want, I'd like to have us adjourn in honor of Joe Ruggles, who was on the, helped form the city and on many, on the planning commission, et cetera, who died in June, but it just had a funeral last week.
All right.
Here, here.
Close this meeting in the memory of Joe Ruggles.